Thank you, everyone, and welcome to today's zoning hearing. Today is April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We do not have someone from the faith community with us, so in lieu of an invocation, we will have a moment of silence. That will be followed by the pledge. For all of you willing, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. You may now rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, so he can walk us through today's agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in American order. We would ask that when the case is called, the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there are any, if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand, so they can be counted for the record. Then after recognizing both parties, they will come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets ten minutes to state their case or concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so please convey all your information to the board within your ten-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets ten minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are four cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z twenty of two thousand and twenty-four, G. George and Associates, Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice. Next case is LUP seven of two thousand and twenty-four, Amy Malahan. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it will not be heard today. Next, SLEP one of two thousand and twenty-four, The Tire Swing Collective, Inc. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, it will not be heard today. And finally, other business item number six of two thousand and twenty-four, T. U. This case was withdrawn without prejudice, it will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request late last week to withdraw another other business case.
Okay.
And that's other business item number two of two thousand and twenty-four, Three Sixty Property Solutions, LLC. The applicant has asked this to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four zero, with Commissioner Richardson being absent.
Thank you. Okay, moving into the held and continued cases, these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three, SDP Acquisitions, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three, Atlanta Remediation Group, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z forty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, Ten Fifty Four Investment Group, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, SS Developers, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three, MRE Canton, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-three will not be heard today. Resounding case Z two of two thousand and twenty-four, Florenory Development Group, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z two of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Thomas O'York. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z ten of two thousand and twenty-four, Pay Paul A. Juah, Popel, LLC. This case was continued until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z ten of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z eleven of two thousand and twenty-four, Salt Springs, LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z eleven of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four, Dillon Investments, LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four, Resi Built. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z eighteen of two thousand and twenty-four, Sug Real Estate, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z eighteen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z nineteen of two thousand and twenty-four, Jellin Holdings, Inc. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z nineteen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. LUP twelve of two thousand and twenty-four, Reginald A. Rutherford. This case was continued, or excuse me, this case was held by the Planning Commission until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP twelve of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. SLEP five of two thousand and twenty-four, Sug Real Estate, LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP five of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Other business item number eight of two thousand and twenty-four, Terry Castner. This case was continued by the staff until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business item number eight of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today.
Excuse me, John, I, maybe I crossed out the wrong number. Which other business item did we take off the agenda?
Uh, number two.
Oh, the one before that I crossed out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other business item number fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four, River View Associates Limited. This case was continued by the staff until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business item number fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. And finally, other business item number sixteen of two thousand and twenty-four, D.J. Holmes, Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business item number sixteen of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. And before we get started on our hearing, I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phones, as the phones do interfere at the broadcasts and presentations when they ring. And lastly, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First case on consent is resounding case Z eight, Jalani Campbell. Request rezoning from CF to R fifteen for a single-family residence in landlots six seventy-three and six ninety-six of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the north side of Lee Road, west of Pine Ridge Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z eight to the R fifteen zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, single-family use only. Number two, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number three, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number four, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number five, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z eight? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z twelve, WPG Mapleton, LLC. Request rezoning from R twenty to NRC for a bank with drive-through in landlot forty-one of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the east side of Floyd Road and on the south side of Ayers Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z twelve to the NRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number two, letter from the Mapleton Improvement Coalition dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And number three, staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant's representative is present? Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z twelve? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add a couple of things to this zoning. The zoning approval is based on the LRC zoning category. Construction hours are Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to seven p.m. Saturday, eight a.m. to seven p.m., and no construction on Sunday. Approval is for this use and this use only. Any other uses will be, will require approval by the district commissioner. Revised step number eight of J. Kevin Moore's letter of agreeable conditions dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four to reflect that the district commissioners to approve the final landscape plan and elevations and other, all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay. Is the applicant here for this matter, and you're amenable to these? Thank you.
Okay, next case is resounding case Z thirteen, Saint Benedict's Episcopal School. Request rezoning from R twenty to O nine for a school in landlot six ninety-five of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Daniel Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z thirteen, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all those stipulations applied to the school site by a previous case, Z seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-one, including: A, letter, letter of agreeable conditions from Kevin Moore dated August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. B, no stadium lighting by the field, however lighting shall be allowed on the field. All site outdoor lighting to be environmentally sensitive with shields. The district commissioner to approve the final lighting plan. C, during the time period when there is no construction or no build, there shall be maintenance of the property. D, construction hours will be Monday through Saturday from seven a.m. to six p.m. E, all other phases shall be brought back to the Board of Commissioners as other business. F, final site plan and elevations to be approved by the district commissioner. G, final carpool plan to be approved by the district commissioner. H, regarding the carpool plan, Department of Transportation to review upon request by the neighborhood or school. And if a parking restriction is justified along a public roadway, then DOT shall take the necessary, necessary steps to enact pursuant to typical department practice set by board, practice set by board, approved criteria and applicable code sections apply. I, final landscaping plan and architectural renderings to come back to the district commissioner for final approval. And J, all staff comments and recommendations, including the most recent DOT comments last, last revised August first, two thousand and twenty-two, not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present? Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z thirteen? So, can I get your hands again? So we got three? Okay. Three people opposed, so we'll pull that off consent, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, next case is resounding case Z fourteen, Full Service by Hot Rod, LLC. Request rezoning from GC to NRC for a car wash in landlot fifty-nine of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the northwest side of Austell Road, South of County Services Parkway. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z fourteen to the NRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan incorporating code-compliant parking to be approved by the district commissioner. Number two, landscape plan including rear twenty-foot landscape buffer, to the extent possible with existing wall detention upon locations, or reduced ten-foot landscape buffer with eight-foot privacy fence adjacent to residential properties, and a minimum nine-foot wide strip required adjacent to the right-of-way per the Austell Road Design Guidelines, to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, general compliance with the Austell Road Design Guidelines, including site and building improvements, with final approval by the district commissioner. Number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number five, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number six, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present for Z fourteen? Uh, let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z fourteen? Let the record show there's no one opposed. All right, next case is resounding case Z sixteen, LDS Holdings, LLC. Request rezoning from GC to NRC for a professional office, that is a contractor, in landlot eighty-five of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Old Noonday Schoolhouse Road, west of Canton Road. Staff recommends approval of Z sixteen to the NRC zoning district with a special exception, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on February first, two thousand and twenty-four, with minor modifications to be approved by the district commissioner. Number two, variances as stated- Number two, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number three, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number four, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number six, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Number seven, planning division comments and recommendations. Number eight, no outdoor storage. And number nine, no heavy equipment to be parked outside. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z sixteen? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, we have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to add for the record, the STIP letter from Attorney Adam Rosen dated March twenty-fifth, 2024, and all staff comments not otherwise in conflict.
Okay. Is the applicant amenable to those additions? Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and, and give my statement to the clerk before we, but.
All right. Next case is LUP nine, Gemma Enterprises. Request a temporary land use permit for a personal care home in land lot fifty of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road, east of Fred Walker Drive. Staff recommends approval of LUP nine for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of six residents. Number two, no parking on the right-of-way. And number three, all stipulations from previous LUPs shall apply. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP nine? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP ten, Orlando Lopez. Request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in land lot four ninety-two of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Hillsborough Circle, west of Bankstone Drive. Staff recommends approval of LUP ten for twelve months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all things done by the applicant to mitigate the citations to be maintained with code enforcement, to revisit the property to provide an update on the property's condition. Is the applicant present? Is applicant here for LUP ten, Orlando Lopez? Is there anyone here opposed to this case? Applicant is not present, so we'll give him a call. Okay. LUP eleven, Pear Tree Photography Atlanta LLC. Request a temporary land use permit for photography in land lot one thirty-four of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Star Miss Court, east of Rambling Road. Staff recommends approval, uh, of LUP eleven for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of one employee. Number two, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number three, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number four, Fire Department comments and recommendations. And number five, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP eleven? Let the record show there's no one opposed. All right. Next case is SLEP two, estate of James W. Bentley. Owner Lynn Bentley Taylor, Bentley Commercial Properties LLC. Summer Our Properties LL LP, uh, and the estate of James W. Bentley, owner Justin Altinger. Request a special land use permit for grinding, reduction of materials in a sawmill in land lots, uh, ten ninety-six and eleven thirty-seven of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Gresham Road, east of Fairview Drive, or excuse me, east of Fairview Street. Staff recommends approval of SLUP two, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation for each business are as follows. A, for the used car storage, Monday through Saturday from eight AM until five PM. No operation on Sundays or federal holidays. B, for top-tier tree service, storing of landscaping trucks and offloading tree trunks and tree debris shall be Monday through Saturday from seven AM to seven PM. Sundays and federal holidays to be reserved for emergency services only if needed, i.e. tornado, heavy storm damage in the area, a fallen tree on a house, et cetera. C, North Georgia Timber, which is the sawmill grinding and air burner technology business, shall be Monday through Friday from eight AM to five PM only. Loading the incinerator should stop by four PM. There shall be no machine activity or inciner- or inciner- incineration on Saturday, Sunday, or federal holidays. Two, limit of one sawmill and one grinder. Number three, limit of two incinerators self-contained for air burning curtain technology, uh, installed based on guidelines from the, uh, the air burner curtain manufacturer, no open fires. Four, adherence to staff comments and recommendations, including Fire Department and the zoning division where applicable. Uh, number five, no open burning. Number six, nothing to be incinerated at night. Uh, number seven, a Knox brand pad lock to be included on the gate for the fire department access. And number eight, only natural wood shall be used, processed in the sawmill, grinder, and air curtain incinerator. Particle board, uh, laminated wood, plywood, or any wood product with glue or chemicals on it is to be avoided. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP two? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, we have some comments, John.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the applicant and, um, for, for working with staff on this and Planning Commission. And I'd also like to add for the record, the revised Fire Department comments, um, from March, revised April eleventh, 2024, and, um, also compliance with all state EPD and local fire department requirements.
Is the applicant agreeable to these conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next case on consent is SLEP three, St. Benedict's Episcopal School. Request a special land use permit for a school in land lot six ninety-five of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Cooper Lake Road, north of Dana Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of SLUP three, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all those stipulations applied, uh, to school site by previous case Z seventy-eight of 2021, including A, letter, uh, letter of agreeable conditions from Kevin Moore dated August tenth, 2022. B, no stadium lighting by the field, however lighting shall be allowed on the field. Uh, all site outdoor lighting to be environmentally sensitive with shields. The district commissioner to approve the final lighting plan. C, during the time period when there is no construction or no build, there, uh, there shall be maintenance of the property. D, construction hours are Monday through Saturday from seven AM to six PM. E, all other phases shall be brought back to the Board of Commissioners as other business. F, final site plan and elevation to be approved by the district commissioner. G, final carpool plan to be pulled, uh, to be approved by the district commissioner. H, regarding the carpool plan, Department of Transportation to review upon request by the neighborhood or school. And if parking restriction is justified along a public roadway, then DOT shall take the necessary steps to enact pursuant to typical department practice set by, uh, the board. Approved criteria and applicable code sections. I, final landscaping plan and architectural renderings to come back to the district commissioner for final approval. And J, all staff comments and recommendations, including the most recent DOT comments, last revised August first, 2022, not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP three? Three again. Okay, let the record show there's three people opposed, so we'll pull that off consent, Madam Chair and Board.
Yeah, excuse me, John, I just want to make an observation that the District Two Commissioner is not present today. We can address this when we pull this from consent, but I do want to make an observation of that as we determine how we'll, um, address this matter.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Gamble?
Um, would the three individuals like to go out and meet with the applicant and discuss their concerns before the hearing?
Yes, I've been, I've been in communication with Commissioner Richardson, and they plan, or at least the applicant plans to do so, but again, we can address that after we hear consent. Thank you.
Okay. Next case on consent is SLEP four, VacuTech LLC. Request a special land use permit for used auto and truck sales in land lots three seventy-seven and three seventy-eight of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the south side of Oak Ridge Commerce Way, north of Oak Ridge Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of SLUP four, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no on-street parking. And number two, staff comments and recommendations contained in the zoning analysis. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP four? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. First case is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for Josilio Cruz regarding rezoning case Z forty-two of two thousand and five. Uh, the property is located on the southeastwardly side of Ivy Road, south of Regency Way, in land lot one eighty-five of the eighteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, sidewalk curb and gutter is waived for only one house on the two point one four acres. Number two, stormwater management comments. And number three, if the property is ever subdivided for more than one house, then the sidewalk curb and gutter would again be required with cost shared among the homes. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number eleven? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number twelve of 2024 is to consider a reduction of, uh, required public roof frontage from fifty feet to zero feet for GFAC Real Estate LLC. The property is located on the north side of Roswell Road, east of Robinson Road, in land lot nine sixty-eight of the sixteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, roof frontage is reduced to zero feet. Number two, stormwater management comments. And number three, Fire Department comments. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number twelve? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number thirteen of 2024 is to consider a reduction of required public roof frontage from seventy-five feet to zero feet for Robert Michael Brennan and Melissa Hatcher Brennan. The property is located on the northeastwardly side of Polo Lane and on the northwesterly side of Center Street in land lots nine sixty and nine sixty-one of the seventeenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, roof frontage is reduced from zero, is reduced to zero feet for track two. Number two, stormwater management comments. And number three, Fire Department comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number thirteen? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And last item on consent is other business item number fourteen of 2024, which is to consider a stipulation and site plan amendment for St. Benedict's Episcopal Day School, Inc., regarding rezoning cases Z seventy-eight of 2021 and SLUP eleven of 2021. The property is located on the east and north side of Dana Street and on the west side of Cooper Lake Road in land lot six ninety-five of the seventeenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received March twelfth, 2024, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management comments. Number three, Fire Department comments. Number four, Cobb DOT comments. And number five, all previous stipulations not in conflict remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number fourteen? Four? Okay, let the record show there's four people opposed, so we'll pull that one off consent also, Madam Chair and Board. And that completes your printed consent agenda.
Thank you, John. I believe there are some additions to consent. Commissioner Burrow?
Can you call for any opposition to OB ten?
Okay.
Petroplex?
Okay. Other business item number ten of 2024 is to consider a settlement of litigation for Petroplex Joint Venture LLC regarding the rezoning case Z sixty of 2020. The property is located on the east side of Canton Road, south of Powell Wright Road, in land lot seven oh eight of the sixteenth district. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number ten? Madam Chair and Board, there's no one opposed to other business item number ten.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Burrow?
Um, I would like to make a motion to add OB ten to the consent agenda. Um, this was a settlement of litigation, and I'd like to add the, um, STIP letter approval subject to the STIP letter dated February twenty-seventh, 2024 from the applicant, and all other staff comments not otherwise in conflict.
Okay.
And, um, I know our county attorney, Brian Johnson, is here to speak to this, and the applicant is here, Mr. Mitchell, and just make sure y'all are agreeable with all that.
Okay. The applicant, you're agreeable with what the commissioner shared?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that's a motion to add it to consent.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries for zero with Commissioner Richardson absent. Okay, are there any other? Yes, Commissioner Sheffield. On LUP ten, were we able to contact the applicant?
Yes, he is heading this right now.
Bill, advice? I mean, it's on consent, no opposition?
You can go and prove it. There's no requirement that they has to be here.
Okay, all right. Then I'm okay with leaving it on consent.
Okay. We'll leave that one on consent.
We may want to notify the applicant that it passes, okay? All right, are there any other changes needed to the consent agenda? Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we're waiting for two more votes on consent.
Oh, we didn't, they called.
Okay, I'm sorry, we'll call the question. You and I voted so quickly. Yes. Okay, the motion carries for zero with Commissioner Richardson again being absent. For those of you who are here as part of the consent agenda, if your case has not been removed from consent, then you are free to leave at this time unless you would like to stay and observe the rest of our zoning hearing. We'll give those who are associated with those cases some opportunity to leave the room, and then we'll go ahead and address those matters that are on our regular agenda.
Chairwoman, it's just that one, Kate, the one that we pulled.
I'm sorry.
So it was just those three cases that were pulled, they're all connected? Was there a conversation about trying to talk with them at a break?
Yes, I'm gonna have, um, their counsel approach, because that's gonna be the only matter we have, so we're gonna have to recess forward, but I do want us to clear.
Okay, John, we can go ahead and get started.
Okay, and the, uh, the three cases we pulled off consent are related to the same properties, Madam Chair and Board. Would it be the Board's wish to kind of hear all those together?
Yes, I'd like to have their, um, applicant's representative please approach so we can talk through, um, our path forward. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Madam Chair. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
I know that you're aware Commissioner Richardson is not here today. The, these cases were on consent, they've been pulled due to opposition. Can you please let us know how she has expressed she'd like to move forward and what your plans were for this morning?
Sure. What was communicated to me was that she, uh, was not going to be able to be here today because she is out of town, um, and that, uh, in the event there was opposition, she was perfectly fine with it being, uh, continued till next month, and, and if that's the Board direction, uh, we're happy to do that as well, so that, uh, she could be present for the discussion, uh, and consideration. Uh, but again, we're, we're here, we can present if this board wants us to move forward, we will do so.
Okay.
Uh, but we're happy to, to also have it continued by the Board, and we've seen the three, or now four individuals, and happy to make sure we speak with them as well in between time.
Okay, thank you. As Commissioner Gamble shared, and, um, also from my discussion with Commissioner Richardson, she was amenable to seeing if there was a way to have some dialogue with those who may be in opposition, um, prior to us possibly hearing this today. Are you open to that if we were to take a recess prior to, um, take any further action? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take a break until nine forty-five? This is our only matter that we have to hear today, so I do want to be able to give you that time, and then we can come back and then see, um, what our next steps are. Thank you, appreciate that.
That would be well received, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, and take a break. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a break.